...council meeting for Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, at Albert County City Hall. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna go ahead and let the sheriff speak, so you can go.
Thank you, sir.
There might be a little lengthy stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Deputy General, like I said, uh, due eleven nine to twelve fourteen, there was thirty-five calls for service. Required hours of forty-three, number of hours put in was seventy-six point two. Um, but everything, this last one, if you have any questions, or if they had any questions about anything else, I'll try my best, or I may be up to Colston. The only thing I wanna actually bring myself would be numbers, or if I knew the number, it's just the school parking, the parking problem at the bottom, that was mine, that I know of. Um, it was on Second Avenue, and we brought that up a couple of times at the big events, and all that stuff. I led the school board now, or the superintendent now, and then sent an email somewhere here, I think, I don't know if it got through or not. But just, um, I just, I thought of, you know, and you don't have to do this by management, it's just me, but, you know, thinking probably, I suspect that we need to stop doing that, it's dangerous, but yellow stripe all the way down on the curb, or another sign or two, because you just have them at the end, and if somebody misses them, you know, and I don't know. But, uh, so we'll be on that, you know, the school's done what they can, so, FYI, thank you.
Yeah, elementary school program, you know, there's so many people come, that's, that's what he's referring to. We can, we can draw a sign up in the short term, and when we paint next year, we definitely could paint more yellow. Yep.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing for the FY, uh, two thousand and eight budget amendment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, discussion comments, any questions from the public?
I was gonna say, what we had on here was the transfers in for revenues, and that was the sixty thousand we just took in general to cover some of the Moonheart Street project. Public safety for the fire department, we had to add sixteen thousand eight hundred, because we had put in for the air packs, which we thought we were gonna get built for in June, didn't get built until July, so it went into this fiscal year. Public works, we took a hundred and forty-three thousand out of that, because we're using it to plant it for Main Street, and we were told that all major projects now have to go through debt service. So we took it out of the public work, put it down through debt service, which is why our debt service was two ninety-seven. It was the Main Street and the remainder of the Moonheart Street project. So that's the majority of it, so... Then raised our expenditures out to one million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand and twenty-one thousand.
No comments, anybody? If there's no comments, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And we have a motion made to close the public hearing, we have a second?
Second.
Are we second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a motion to accept the resolution, uh, number twelve, days two oh one seven, days one, approval of the two thousand and eighteen budget amendment.
So moved.
Then move. And then we have a second?
I second.
Chester seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a, uh, may need a motion to for approval of consent agenda?
And we did have one additional invoice, Hopkins, twenty-five dollars for re-rental of the chlorine tanks, the green cylinders, stain of the day.
So with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved, that's what I'm gonna do.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Are you seconding it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public appearances, uh, for Fire Department, you're up.
We had four calls in November, there's two medical in the township, a fire in the township, and a medical in the city one that's... Um, I guess, I'm telling you, we need to break some diesel treatment on these tanks.
Yep.
For the trucks, and then... The FPA changed their standards and all the bunker gears, looking past ten years old. So they're outdated, we're gonna have to start budgeting for bunker gear too. And helmets, and all that kinda stuff.
How old's that bucket?
Probably fourteen, fifteen years old.
I think it's probably a little bit.
Those are good, but we only bought pants here, coat here, and we have to buy, like, I got pants on, I need a coat now. And then I'd be good, but, I mean, there's about five people's stuff last year, so we probably need to think about budgeting that or something.
Any idea how many, how many sets of pants coats?
Twenty-two or three people in the department.
Oh, that's expensive.
Nothing's cheap. Cheap for an air pack, so we can have those covered.
Do you have any idea what kinda funds you're talking about?
I, I think we could buy so much a year, I mean, cannot do it all in one shot. And we can even try next year for a grant, or something, but...
And they don't have a deadline, you have to...
No.
Take it out?
I mean... They gotta be understandable for small town departments, you know, I mean... You think, up and buy all this crap.
Gotta get some numbers for budget in January.
Probably pretty close to what we had last time.
Probably about twenty-five, thirty?
Hmm... Twenty-five, are you close to budget numbers?
I can look up what it was and get me a...
Yeah, we might wanna look at spreading them out, so it comes around the next time.
Like the air packs we're doing.
Yeah, like the air packs we're doing, and especially when, uh, caught. Right, okay.
And then it'll get a grant, yay!
Yeah. 'Cause this year we're going for the ice skate system to fill those air tanks.
Yeah.
And maybe next year we can go for bunker gear, and a lot of those though.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, if not, Matt, you're up.
I don't really have anything that wouldn't are in the agenda, so I'll just see if you have any questions for me.
Well, looks good. Okay, um, okay, anybody wishing to speak? Go ahead.
Yep, well, I have several items to speak about. Uh, I wish you'd just let me speak about them, and then you can say what you have to say. But with the ice skating rink, it seems to me that the smarten complex out there would be an ideal location for as a temporary lane to ride out. And... Another thing I have is, I was wondering why you couldn't put some of those, uh, yellow or orange markings around our driveways, so that people don't park right at the end of our driveways, give us a little bit to back out. We used to have room to back out and, and do it, and they cut it shorter this time. Third thing is, I'm wondering, uh, how it was that, uh, the town was able to use part of our property for the sidewalk uh, without asking our permission beforehand? And the fourth thing was, uh... I'm wondering about in the wintertime, why we might not have even an odd parking on Moonheart Street. This allowed you to park, to plow to one side of the street, and the next day you can come back and plow the other side of the street. Everybody would have to move their vehicles. And another thing I was wondering was, uh, the speed limit on these golf carts. Uh, and the tractors with wagons that come through the neighborhoods. I think ten mile an hour's probably fast enough for both of them. I don't see any reason that either one of those need to go over ten mile an hour. And I guess that's pretty much enough for tonight.
I have a question about your concern with, um, the town able to use part of your property for sidewalk?
Yep.
What, what exact part of the, your property were you talking about?
Anything above the sidewalks, mine.
Uh, I would have to look at, um, the assessor's page to see that. Where, where your property PIN is actually at.
Pardon?
I would have to see exactly where your property PIN is at, I think you, I think I could look at that on the assessor's update page. I'll have to look at that.
I don't know where those property PINs are either, uh, doesn't seem that I can find them out in the yard anymore.
Well, I don't, I don't know exactly when your house is built, but those PINs disappear through construction projects and...
They were there.
People pulling them off.
We did have markings on the, uh, on the property. I knew where my lot line was exactly before you did the property.
Mr. Hill, you're talking about the regular replacement of your sidewalk, though, the right of way?
Yes.
You're talking about just the replacement of your sidewalk? That area?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's the right of way.
Well, you're entitled to that, but you're not entitled to go past the sidewalk without my permission. Anything that came from the sidewalk onto my property should have my permission.
I believe that was covered by the construction easement that you signed.
You signed an easement, didn't you?
Okay. No, nobody suggested to me that they were gonna do this.
The easement says ten feet.
Huh?
The easement allowed us ten feet.
I know, I would bull it in to sign it now.
Anybody want to address any of that?
No action, can you take it?
Yeah.
Uh, I will say something about the Martin complex, that's school property, we can't, the city has no power to put anything on the school's property. With your ice rink idea, we can't do that.
Why wouldn't that not be, uh, a good place to try this out, in view of, this for the school?
I, I think that was brought up in the previous council meetings, that the funding was related to, to the city, or was, or given to the city for a project for the city. And I think what Councilman Menson is saying is that that property belongs to the school, so we couldn't grant those funds to the school. It wasn't allowed in the grant. Is that the correct, your, your understanding of it, sharing the word on the grant the most? It just wasn't allowed in the, in the, in the grant.
These are questions.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And the rink isn't just for the school, it's for everybody.
Well, they have, they have restrooms and, and...
Sure, I understand.
And, and a complete thing out there.
Yeah, there were certain restrictions within the grant, which we put out at the time, that limited some of the project ideas that we, that we could do.
Matt's is up.
But I've noted each one of your items.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? If not, we'll move on to, uh, the Web Care Net, uh, city website demonstration.
You not here?
No mic, no?
Is he coming?
I don't know, I haven't talked to him.
Do you wanna just postpone it till maybe he comes? And if we can move it down, if he comes, we'll see, 'cause he's probably got everything, doesn't he? So, okay. City maintenance?
Okay, um, in general, uh, as far as the water system goes, everything is working fine. I can't remember when it came about, I think last meeting I let you know there was a power line bored through our sewer in front of the co-op. Um, that got taken care of last week. Um, they were gonna bore in a whole new line, and then we were gonna then dig up the affected area and, and fix it, but as the crew was working on getting set to put the line in, they determined that the power line was in conduit, they thought there'd be enough flex, so they, they dug it themselves, um, lifted the power line up, blocked it above the sewer. I called Zach Borst, he came, he didn't even have to bring earthmoving equipment, 'cause the, a line crew had it dug up. He patched the, the sewer line, and, um, then all I did was help backfill a little bit, but there's no cost to us. Alliant will pay for whatever Bill Zach sends us, uh, for his part, and it's all their baby, so... All I did was facilitate, making sure they had, you know, what they needed and timing, so that's all complete. Due in large part probably to dry weather, the sewer flow numbers to the lagoons are, are excellent. Um, everything's going well there, with no problems. Onto, uh, maintenance in general, all the snow removal equipment is serviced and ready to go. Um, I replaced the headlights on the V plow, last year we replaced the headlights on the big ten footer on the dump truck with LEDs, because the old ones tend to break, uh, we did the same with the V plow this year, that's complete. Um, I added some amber flashing LED lights to the back of the sander, the actual sander body itself, and a, a work light to be able to see the spread of the sander, which, there was a light on the back of the truck, but we could never keep it operating, 'cause it was right in the sand path. So I was able to wire in a plug and use that power source, and, and that way, when I take the sander in and out, it's just like a trailer plug, just unplug it and move it, so now I got a little extra warning lights flashing capacity while I'm plowing snow. Um, that's all done. Uh, probably should've brought it up when Steve was talking, but the fan I told you about last time, that the motor was not working. Um, the motor is shot, this, uh, piston was scored, cylinder was scored, it's an old, old two-stroke. Cheapest replacement fan I could buy was eighteen hundred dollars. Um, so I ordered and purchased a, a small Honda, four horsepower, matches the horsepower of the one that was on it, so I'm retrofitting now, I had to have a little metal plate made at Marion Iron, I picked that up this afternoon, so hopefully, everything goes well, um, mating that together, but three hundred and eighty bucks on the motor, I, I don't think I'll have much more than four hundred dollars worth of pieces in it, and four or five hours of my time, I think, to have it with a, with a new motor on it when we're done, so I should hopefully have that done next week. By the way, so...
Did you ever get that plug on one thirty-five, though?
No, nope. Every time I start to think about that, I get pulled away somewhere else, like the Christmas tree falling over. Which has been my nemesis, it's backstanding again, in case you didn't notice, but... As far as streets go, Kluusner's not responding to me, I don't know, I'm gonna guess they, they're shut down for the year as far as patching out on, on Roosevelt. Uh, I think I'm gonna go ahead and use up some bottle patch and fill that hole that's out there at this point. I, I, they aren't even returning my call now, so I'm assuming...
That's what we talked about, Roosevelt.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we'll, I'll just patch it, and, you know, if they do show up yet this year, then we wasted a couple bags of patch, but that's not a big deal, so... One developing issue I'm noticing is, on Roosevelt Street, um, the storm sewer inlet that is just west of the railroad tracks, there's a small concrete panel that's starting to fall, right in front of the, the, um, storm sewer entrance, so I'm assuming that we're undermining the street right there, there's probably a, something has opened up into the storm sewer, and it's, you know, there's water flow underneath there, and we're, we're losing a little dirt underneath the panels, so I don't think it'll be a problem this winter, but I'll probably be looking at doing something with that early in the spring, see if we can investigate why it's sinking, and get a repair plan in play, should be not much more than calling Dan Sherman and seeing if he can cut it out, and then we'll see where it's going, and make sure there's no bigger problem, and then fill it back in, so... Not a big deal, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. And other than that, as far as the basic every week items, that's about all I have, anybody have any questions on that stuff? If not, we'll move on to the, the water upgrade that we've been talking about for a few months now. It has gotten a little more complicated, um, in the process of trying to come up with a, with solid numbers as to how to go ahead with the remote access to the water system, um, but I do have numbers for everything now. What happened was, we had to come up with someone to actually install this equipment, and in doing so, LEC, the company we've been working with, contacted Tri-City Electric out of Davenport, um, and they have, are more than capable of doing it, but in their research of the, the PLC, which is basically the brain of the lift station, they have found out that that PLC, it was nearly fifteen years old to start out with, it doesn't have the ports necessary to pull the information off that we need, there is a solution to that, but in their research, they have found out that that PLC will no longer be, it's a Mitsubishi, it will no longer be supported basically one year from now, meaning if it fails, we're done. We don't have any, any repair capability at that point, we would be putting a new PLC in, and doing it in an emergency fashion if it goes down. So their suggestion was to put in a Allen Bradley PLC, basically the same unit that controls our water system, and there is a duplicate in Wellhouse Three, just in case we need to control the water system from Wellhouse Three. That way, our entire system would be on the same platform. So that's an extra added wrinkle. If that is the case, that we go ahead with that, then the connection part is easy, because it's up to date, you know, current electronics, plenty of ports for gathering the information. Matt shaking his head, he probably knows exactly what we're talking about. Um, so, that... With that in mind, knowing that that is a possibility, the totals come in like this, and there's two options on the remote control system, so now I'm just talking about the remote access to the system. The units, the cellular units themselves, with the engineering and the programming and the installation, to put a unit at all four of our locations, and have it all connected, and have web access to all of it, is sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-five cents. We could save a little money and not put one of those units in Wellhouse Three, because Wellhouse Three is currently controlled via radio from the main control, we could leave it that way. In talking with everybody involved about that scenario, there's two problems with that. If we have a radio failure, we've lost touch, and then you're either forced to replace what is basically an antique control, uh, or method of, of communication, or, you know, adding one of these later, which would be more costly than putting it in now as part of the project. The other problem with not having a cellular unit out there is that because radio frequency is limited as to the data it can transfer, our chlorine readings come in in six tenths of a pound increments. So let's say we use one point four pounds of actual, um, chlorine, according to the scale that's located in the building, it will only transmit one point two. Or if it goes to one point five or one point six, it will show up as one point eight. In the long run, that's not a big deal, it's been that way for years, it's always been, six tenths of a pound. But if we have better communication system, they've assured me, we can have actual scale readings. Like I said, in the end, we're probably coming up with a fairly accurate amount of, of chlorine that we're using, but that is a DNR reported quantity, so we can improve our accuracy, and probably transmit more data if we have a unit out there. So that being said, if you did wanna save some money on the project, we could go with just three units, and that would be fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. All of this comes with a monthly cost, there is a, uh, access fee for LEC per unit to view all this on the web, and a monthly charge from US Cellular. So with four units, that'd be a hundred and forty-eight dollars a month, and if we only had three units, it'd be a hundred and eleven dollars a month. So those are the two options. Now, back to the PLC, and I view this as separate from the water control system, because this is gonna be an issue down the road for us, whether we do remote access or not, so I feel like it should be, that's why it's listed separately on your, your agenda. The numbers that they're giving me to replace and program a, a new PLC is eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. Now, there's a little crossover in cost, because the installation we got, quote, we got from Tri-City, does include putting in a new PLC, because that's what they're recommending we do. On the flip side, should we choose to ignore the PLC issue, it, the installation is probably gonna cost the same, because they have to add a few things and spend a lot more time trying to talk to this fifteen-year-old PLC that's in there. So they all felt like the installation cost was a wash, either way that we go, no difference in price there. If we stick with the old one, it's gonna take more time to get it hooked up, if we put the new one in, it's gonna go quicker, but, you know, it's gonna be extra cost to actually mount it in the box, and get it in, in to use, so... Those are the options on the project, we budgeted, was it twenty even for this? So we're coming in at thirty-five hundred dollars if we go with all four, thirty-five hundred under what we budgeted for the project, but adding the PLC work is eighty-eight hundred bucks, so...
What do you recommend?
I recommend going with four units and putting the PLC in, it's kinda like the water meter reader, you know, when they told us our old reader was unsupported. If we choose to ignore that and go past that, if it goes down, then we're, we're in a world of hurt, I'd rather, you know, it's the pay me now, pay me later thing. You know, if it, if that thing fails on us, we're gonna pay emergency prices, 'cause we're gonna ask it, someone to come right now and fix it, so... And same with the, same, yeah, same with the cellular unit at Wellhouse Three, if we have a radio failure and decide to put in another cellular unit later on, we're gonna pay a lot more to get one cellular unit put in, 'cause they're...
What was the maintenance and warranty on that?
On the...
On the equipment, for how long it lasts, and what do they do if it breaks?
Oh, yeah, they'd, um, I, I'd have to dig through my email to find exactly what the, uh, what the terms are, but there's, there's several years of coverage on the cellular units. And the programming, you know, these PLCs are designed to go roughly fifteen years in that neighborhood. And so it makes sense that after sixteen years, that Mitsubishi is obsolete, basically.
Okay.
Yes.
For my benefit, would you re, go through the, the good bells and whistles, this has got to go first?
The, the biggest and best feature of the remote access is simply that, that myself and anyone else that we chose was capable, that we could allow to do it, can control all of our pumps, and monitor all of our alarms, basically from anyplace where there's inter, internet access, on a, on a smartphone, on a laptop, on a regular computer. It all got started from the fire at Riggs's house, needing to get pumps turned on, and I was out of town, and nobody had a key. And we do all that, the secondary benefit is all of the data collection that we can do. It does not take me a lot of time to go around and write down the numbers and, and record our numbers that the DNR requires, but with this system, it's gonna be set up to automatically record all of these. And I could even still go around and write it on paper, if we wanted to have it that way, that's not a problem. It's just that it would, it would organize it in a searchable, um, you know, fashion, we can basically set this thing up to, to look at this data however we want to. You know, if we wanted to start seeing trends as to how much water usage at certain times of the year, you know, we could just set this program up to, to watch it for us, and view it anywhere, anytime we wanted. If you wanted to ask me how many gallons of water we pumped, have pumped so far this month, I'd be able to pull it up and tell you.
Would this eliminate our weekend checking of these things?
No, 'cause we still have to do chlorine samples, and that's, that's a manual operation.
I just...
Yeah.
As long as your data was there.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, if it wasn't for the chlorine sampling every day, that mandate, it, it would eliminate that, if it wasn't for that part of it.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, this monitors the lift station?
Yes.
So you don't have to sit out there during...
Exactly.
Hot water situation.
Exactly, if it's getting close, but it's not there yet, I can sit at home and watch it, and wait for it to get to... and wait for it to get to the point where, yes, okay, now I have to do something. Also, by doing this, we are going to get monitoring capability of the small lift station, which we've never had before. Which isn't terribly important. You know, there's, there's only three homes on it, but yet, we don't want any problems for those three people. But hoping, looking towards the future, if there is some sort of expansion east of town, you know, and that system can take a few more houses, then it becomes more important and we're already set up to watch it, so. Or if that lift station gets, um, removed in favor of a larger one, because we have a, a larger expansion, that monitoring equipment can go to that larger one as well, so we're just ready to, to look at it. And, and US Cellular has said too, that they took a look at our, the cell phone program for Sharon and I's phone, and she's confident that she could upgrade both of our phones and bring our monthly bill down and lump it all together. And so, even though we're taking on an extra monthly fee, which LEC's access fee would be billed by US Cellular. They, they can, they have the ability to do that, put them together. They would be increasing our monthly cell phone bill, but more than likely, she could tailor our cell phone package down to a smaller number. And, and also upgrade our phones too, which yours is old, old. I know, you like it, I know, but. Yeah, I think the one that I'm carrying came the first day that I started in full-time or second day because the old one crapped out, so.
The agenda didn't say, are you seeking approval on this tonight?
Yeah, I mean, if, I, I'm confident that I'm the rock-solid number. So if, if you're willing to, to make a crack at it, of course, it'd probably be after the first year sometime before they would, would do any kind of install. And there's a little bit more, um, information gathering to do as far as the, the tiny parts of it, the real fine parts. So someone would have to actually come and view. We'd have pictures and we have diagrams and everything that's been sent to the company, but they'd have to get their eyes on a few things, but nothing that would change the quote, so.
When would they start putting it in?
I would say, if we told them tonight, it was, it was a go, within thirty to forty days, they'd be putting it in. And, um, probably actually the hardest part of it is going to be going in and doing the programming. Because they have to, to not change the programming on what we have, but they have to, to go into the programming, to pull the data that we want and to give us the access that we want. And putting the new PLC in at the lift station would take some time because they would basically just try and mimic what's there, but on that new PLC. The information we gather and how it operates, so. So it's a little bit of custom work that's going to take a little bit of time, so. Yeah, it, it could easily be going before January is over.
We can even take a motion.
Say the funds are there, Sharon?
You need to do it separate, one for the, for the water upgrade and one for the sewer repair, you, or?
So we're doing the water would be sixteen five sixty and the sewer repair is eighty-eight.
Yeah. That's up to you, where you got it?
That's more than twenty.
Well, it's more than twenty, but we talked about it earlier. If we're going to upgrade that PLC, that's more of like a sewer repair. It's not, yes, it's part of this because it was discovered as part of the water control.
Yeah.
Come out of the sewer then.
Yeah. Eight thousand, eight, well, yeah, eighty-eight, it's gonna put, so we can really, yeah.
When we talked earlier, I thought you said there was around a hundred and forty thousand in the?
Oh, there is in sewer, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the money in, so we just probably have to put like the amendment at twenty-five, twenty-six before the end of the year.
That's a year-end amendment?
Yeah.
What are the, what are the, uh, two items and what are the totals?
The water control system is sixteen thousand five sixty, sixty-five.
Five sixty, sixty-five, water control, minute?
Yep, and the PLC upgrade is eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three.
PLC upgrade is how much?
Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three, even.
Do we're doing this just because of the one house fire?
No, it's for data collection and having, and the dialer doesn't work. And dialer, I've had him out here three times fixing the dialer in a year. And so there has to be something done to, to.
Well, you just said it all stemmed from the house fire, well?
That's how it got started.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's nice to turn the pumps on, but I also had enough water on the ground that we've been fine too, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, but.
One apartment there, there's enough water, but I just don't want to think it's because of us.
Oh, no, 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 no.
The other part of this is, we don't have to pay him to sit out there and watch the pump.
Oh, I know, I know, pre-ears.
Precisely.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're looking at about twenty-five, four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Which, the reason that we, that we budgeted twenty was because HOA said they'd come in at nineteen somewhere. That's the first company we looked at. And automated was going to be forty thousand, so they were way out of range. But HOA came back later, after we found out that the, having a dark, dark network on the fiber, after the telephone company finally got back to us and they said, you know, they were going to charge us a thousand per site to set it up and six hundred a month to use it. He was going to have to retool and his number was going to get bigger too. Because he was either going to have to go to radios or some other source of communication, which in his case meant building towers. Because we would have had to, to put a tower up, uh, of some size at the small lift station just to have line of sight radio to the top of the water tower. Because of the terrain and, I mean, that quote was going to grow because the dark fiber network didn't work. That's why the cellular thing became so advantageous. Because that cellular signal, signal is there and it's, doesn't take line of sight to get the.
Do you know this is two separate motions here, Mary?
Yeah, let's do it.
I just, we know that this has an ongoing cost and this is potentially a fifteen-year commitment, right? Okay. I'll make a motion for the water, to approve the water control unit for sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay, motion been made. We have a second?
I'll second that.
I am second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those made?
I'm sorry, I mean, aye.
Oh, you, okay. Motion creepers. I didn't hear you.
I'll have to speak up.
I'll make a second motion to, for the PLC upgrade. It goes in conjunction with that for eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I am second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carrie, you think? Okay, anything else for guy?
Nope, that's all I've got. Anybody got questions for me?
Okay, let's, uh, go ahead, consider, consider the ordinance of, uh, two thousand seventeen dash one, two, dash one, allowing golf carts and all that for city code. Oh, I mean, state code, yeah, sorry, state code. We can act on it, we can table it, we can. If we move to accept it, you can waive the first and second, third reading. There's nobody here.
Is there anybody here?
Yeah, posing on it?
Yeah, I say we move, move on, sorry.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion. We move to, um, approve the first reading and can we suspend the rest?
We have to do that separately.
Okay, gotcha.
So, consider ordinance twenty, twenty seventeen?
I'm making a motion, we move to approve the first reading of the ordinance twenty seventeen dash twelve dash one.
I'll second it.
Okay, Chester second it. All, once again, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Your motion carries. Now we can go ahead and make a motion to waive the second, second, third readings.
Second, then you make a final reading.
Yeah, then make a final reading.
I make a motion to move to suspend the second reading of ordinance twenty seventeen dash twelve dash one.
Okay, motion's been made to suspend the second reading. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Chester second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I want even another motion to suspend the third reading.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, moved by Chester. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Sorry, maybe that's okay.
Okay, to start, discuss, take action on eighteen nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen law enforcement contract? Going up a dollar an hour? And what, what's our contract for?
Forty-three dollars.
Forty-three hours.
Forty-three dollars.
Forty-three a month.
I didn't get it anyway, unless you all got your pocket I did?
No, because it's just the same one we get every year.
I've got a half a meeting.
You got that contract?
I got the letter, got it. Sorry.
I'm going to shake you up a little bit.
I don't mind discussing it, but I'd ask that you table this till next month, until the whole council's in there and we all have a chance to review it.
Okay, we can do that.
Pleasure of the council, but that's what I would ask.
Okay, so table, go ahead and table this till the next meeting. Okay, we mixed up, Charlie, mayor of?
I asked for five minutes, just to make a couple of comments. And hand out kind of what I call my vision for coming in as the next mayor. And I will be brief, I promise. But I only made enough copies for the current council that will be there, that are incoming. But I will make the comments at faceable on there. I know that Mayor Bozenberry's going to speak too, so I won't say too much to take away anything that he's going to talk about. But I do want to say that, um, not only is the mayor, uh, the mayor, but he's also my neighbor and a good friend. And we did discuss, um, me running for mayor early on in the process. We communicated throughout the whole process and it was a nice friendly race, so. Just want to get that out there. There's no animosity and I look forward to continuing the work that you've done, so. So, just wanted to know that for the record. Anyway, a few items. In short, um, I will be naming a mayor pro temp, which will be Bethany Sarason. And welcome to the council, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, in January. And the first order of business will be to be filling the vacant council seat, which, um, I will be resigning my current seat for a two-year fill. I don't have, uh, any set names on that, although I think that some names are going to come up very soon for that position, and how we're going to fill that. My top priorities, I just wanted to touch on a little bit, is a new fire station. And I talked to Chief Graham about that, uh, earlier this year. And you will have my commitment to do everything possible to support you in getting that new fire station. Absolutely my top priority. And that includes, um, recruiting and retention and whatever you need for your fire department, so. I did, uh, create a new, um, email called albertatmayor@ftcs. And I want to make that available to everybody in the public as soon as possible in January. So if there is issues and they want to email me direct, um, I can monitor that separately from my other email and be able to communicate with the folks. And, uh, I talked a little bit about some of the stuff that I'd like to see on the website. I think that we talked about that as a council for some time, but it is a top priority to get a, uh, website redone for the city. Uh, and include things like potentially e-payments or at least automated, um, uh, things that can be done. Even if it means an additional cost to citizens, they want for the convenience, but citywide alerts, events and notifications and things like that. And, um, not only to have our forms out there, to be able to just fill out the form online and submit it. So I'm excited that we're doing interviews and things like that, uh, and presentations to the council to do that for the website. Although, talk about impassable, we'd like to see a newsletter go out, uh, at least once in a while to the citizens of Auburnette, updating them, you know, potentially in their water bill or utility bill, telling them what we're doing, uh, because we do do a lot of positive things as a council. Um, I will be meeting with, uh, not only the new council members, but, um, and council members, anytime they want, of course, but, but I'll be meeting with department heads in January to include, uh, clerk treasurer, uh, public works and the fire chief and, uh, do whatever I can to support them and give them some, um, further ideas of what I'd like to see done in each one of those departments. Um, I would like to see all city business CC to my new mayor's email address. And I encourage all council members to do the same thing, to stay completely, uh, up to date on what's going on within the city. I'd like to streamline the budget, uh, budget process by acquiring, uh, new and improved software to do the budgeting. And I'd like to see direct deposit for, uh, the council members. We've talked about it before, but, there's, I don't see there's any reason why we can't do that for, especially the members that are, uh, members over at Farmer State Bank. So that just gives you an idea of some of the top ideas of what I want to see done. And then I list three outlooks there, and I'll wrap this up for them the next minute. The business outlook, that's just to meet and discuss priorities with, uh, city business owners and establish any interest in an Albert at Chamber of Commerce. And I know we're a small city, but there are plenty cities out there at or around, um, a thousand population and even less that have very effective Chamber of Commerce. School outlook is to meet with, uh, school administrators and any potential partnerships, resource sharing and, uh, asset sharing, which the school has already approached this council for such ideas. And then the community outlook is to have an open and transparent communication with the citizens. Look at potential city sidewalks all over the city, uh, especially for those areas that want them. And then, um, with the creation of, um, what I would like to see as new departments with council approval, uh, by abolishing the, uh, current committees that we have, uh, work more with the Parks and Recreation Council member, uh, to work, especially in and around the Benefit Days area, but all over the city for the beautification of the city. So, I appreciate the five minutes. It's a good forum to try to get that out to the citizen, especially since we report our council members, or our council meetings. And, uh, thank you for the five minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead, number twelve, we set a, uh, date for a budget workshop in January?
Here's where the homework comes in. First thing on here is I put out the goals. I only got like four responses back, so I'm handing out nine of them this time. I want to get at least eight back. Because if we're going to do a budget, we first need to see what it is that we're projecting ourselves to. And then on the second page, we've got our budget report, which was done after we paid bills this month. So fifty percent of this year has been completed. And on the first column is your total budget. And at the bottom, it's like the public safety, we budgeted ninety-three, four hundred for this year. And we have expended twenty-nine, six, twenty-two, so sixty-eight percent of our budget's been used already in that. So this gives you a real idea of where we are at. We should be basically at fifty percent because we're fifty percent through the year. It also shows that our total budget is one million, six, sixty-nine, oh, twenty-eight. We've already spent six million, sixty-three, five, twelve, so we have like six hundred and five left for the rest of the year. And then a hundred and eighty thousand will come out for the due principal and interest. Got about four hundred and twenty-five thousand to last us the next six months. And then to work on the budget, I've given you our worksheets and our revenue. And this really is one of the best budget programs there is. And Datatech works with the state and our forms all flow through with Ted Nelson. So we don't have to do anything. Datatech works real closely with him. And your first sheet here, it gives you a number recognition, like the first number is oh, oh, one. And that means it comes out of the general fund, which is from property tax, permits, interest, franchise fees. And your expenses are your fire department, building inspector, road use. And then it goes into your one ten is your road use, one twelve is your way benefit. Your second set of numbers tells you what department, like the police department, fire department, building inspector. And then your third, your set of four numbers there is where it breaks it down into, you know, whether it's wages, whether it's utilities, legal fees, whatever. And then on the worksheet, you have what we spent two years ago, what we spent last year, and then what we have currently. you have what we spent two years ago, what we spent last year, and then what we have currently spent six months of this year. So it gives you a real good idea. We should be pretty much in the same range. So, this will be your homework for whenever we have a budget meeting in January.
So we need to set a date for that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I would suggest you do it after the, after the, like, the meeting, January meeting.
Yep.
Be any time of fifteenth on. Cause it's second Thursday on, it's on the eleventh. You wanna go for the eighteen?
That's my, maybe.
I was gonna say, if anybody wants to come in any time and play budget, I'm going to have, I like that. Once you get used to the numbers, it really. Any questions, any problems, any wanna see how it works?
Is he, is he eighteenth on a Thursday, is it?
Yep.
It is.
Okay.
A week after.
A week after.
That's, um.
You want to come in for budget?
Uh, is that there?
Oh. On January eighteen?
Yep.
Does that night work for you?
Yep. No, that night does work.
It doesn't?
No, I'm already scheduled.
Okay.
Well, night works for you. Anything with that?
Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay.
January seventeenth?
Charlie?
I think so, yeah. I don't have any work schedule, I'm probably, I should, usually evenings are always up there.
Okay, let's go for January, um, seventeenth. At seven o'clock. Okay, on that, take discussion and transfer monies to Moonheart Project.
We, doing the Moonheart Project, we had said we would not use tax funds, so we had transferred two hundred and sixty thousand into the debt service. And actually, so far, we have spent two hundred and sixty thousand and two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighteen cents. So we need to replace that. And then our Moonheart interest that was due December first was eleven thousand, one thirty-four, forty-six. And these are our last MSA invoices, um. So a total of nineteen thousand, one seventy-two, ninety-six needs to be put into debt service if we're not using tax funds. And do we wanna take it out of general, out of road use, out of reserves, out of what is council on it? From here on out, it'll be easy because, um, we've already got our schedule worked out. One season we'll have an interest payment and then one year we'll have principal and interest. So we'll know exactly when we do budget, how much we need to transfer in, we'll do it at fight. And this is just wrapping up all the loose ends.
What's in reserves?
Three hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Do you have suggestions where we should take it?
Just a, huh? Just a, huh?
Yeah. I weigh that just to third, to third, to third here, sure.
Well, because that was how we're going to do our payments from here on out. Remember Maggie did our schedule and like, so starting in February when we budget, we'll budget like a third of the payments will come out of road use, a third of them will come out of local option, and then a third is either general or reserve, whichever you prefer. Right now, we do have a hundred and seventy-six thousand in general. We could use, take it out of general. We have a hundred and thirty-seven in road use and a hundred and thirty-eight local option. Or we have our three hundred and ninety-nine thousand in reserves. And the difference in where you use it is if we take it out of road use, I mean, then that can only be used for road use. So if we get run into a project, we, local option is fifty percent tax relief, fifty percent infrastructure, so. That's what we can use it there or we can transfer from general.
There's no, I've got all kinds of options here. That doesn't really, the ground can hurt ourselves no matter what.
Not really.
Now, that doesn't make much difference where we take it.
Is there more reserves? What do you think?
Well, that doesn't really make any difference. I, I just assume split it up, take some out of general, some out of the reserve.
To accommodate the whole?
Yeah.
So I do have fifty, fifty, general and reserves?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you will need a motion for that thing?
I'll write you about the resolution out, we can approve it next month. I just didn't write it up, I didn't know where you wanted to.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, discuss, take action on one more three-point slave grant. If you have that in there, it's gonna.
Is that your role in this reading? She's waiting for our meeting tonight to finish it up and have to walk her ahead.
So what do you need on this right now?
They needed to know, uh, when plans, when Albernat actually plans to begin construction, have we ordered any of the equipment mentioned? And the students will be participating. I did invoice them like she asked. I've got the check and deposited in the bank last Friday. The check is here and deposited, so.
So this ice cream thing, is this take down news? Okay, it can be, you just gotta find a question store.
Right.
What do you think, Guy?
Yeah, I, I, it sounds like it's compact enough. I can, I can fit it, so.
Fit it somewhere?
Yeah, I can go in the full shed and just need to try and make sure we don't have any rodent issues if there's, you know, any edible parts there.
Probably gotta wait till next year to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I would assume, or I, yeah, depends on how quickly we do need to, to use the funds.
We did discuss, like, we're gonna try to get this ground at least moved right in the spring, right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I, I was waiting for this to say, I'll probably start now trying to get some, some quotes on, on getting that, the dirt that we have leveled out, getting that area flat and, you know.
And if they can do it this winter, yeah, it's not froze that badly.
Yeah, actually, Pierce Tovin called, um, they were just wanting to see if we had any upcoming projects, and I think the call was basically to say that they were slow. And, you know, so I, I wouldn't wanna jump on the first guy that says he needs a little work, but, you know, I think they would come if, if it turned out their price was, was good. I mean, we could, we could take a look at that. I suppose to go ahead though, we'd have to have a special to approve it, or how would that work at this point, or? I don't know, that's just it.
I should get some numbers.
Yeah, I just need to get some numbers. I guess I could do an email to everyone if I get some numbers.
If we have them special, we can do it.
And then we can do it if, if we need to, but, yeah, cause that's the first step, getting a flat spot and then being able to seed in the spring right away.
Seed it in the spring and get going.
Yeah, cause it would be nice even in the springs if we did get some grass established, so we could throw a makeshift net up.
Mm-hmm.
And it could be used already.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. No, I'll get, I'll get on, trying to figure out what it'd take to get the,
Thanks.
Get the ground prep where it needs to be. I did, I should throw out to you too, that I mentioned to Rex Naylor, I just asked him if he was willing to sell that lot that is directly behind the, the lot that he gave us or the area that he gave us as part of per ordinance. And he said, yeah, I don't know. He kept reminding me, you know, I didn't wanna give you that other piece in the first place, so I don't know what the price would be, but. He has to talk to his brother and he promised me he would come up with a number. And I just thought, i- if we're starting to work out there and that was a doable thing, we might as well know about it and see if that's possible, so.
So do these, do these folks pay the invoices direct, or do we accumulate them and bill them back as a singular invoice?
No, she's paying me fourteen thousand. I, but deposited the check last Friday, the fourteen thousand, two twenty.
So then they just require some sort of documentation later of what we spent on, or?
No, we more.
They've done this whole program on what we told them.
It's pretty generous.
Well, she did this whole newsletter, so if you don't, people probably come and see where is it at?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, no, we'll do it.
Yeah. And then that way, you know, if you, if it does run up to more than fourteen thousand, two hundred, it'll just be our.
Well, I, I just, anyway, said, would you send an invoice from the state? So did you send them an invoice and they, okay, all right, so you can send them a generic one, they don't care?
I did, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Cause I, all I had to put on it was three-point blank invoice. You owe me fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, it doesn't matter.
You want it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I just wondered.
So what should I tell her? We're gonna get bids on doing the dirt work?
Yep. Yeah, start with that, cause that's the, the foundation of everything else that's gonna happen is getting the dirt.
Sounds like they needed a day or quarter in whether or not we'd work with the school. Can we safely work with students at the school to do some of this, maybe in the spring or not?
Design things?
Yeah, I think design things for sure, yeah, as far as annual labor, yeah. As far as trying to take the space and lay it out and determine where it's gonna be and, and yeah, that would be great for them to work on without it.
So it sounds like that's a yes on the application.
They, there was a little disappointment from the, uh, from the fire collaborative that we didn't really go with an idea that they had on their questionnaire. Um, but it was also rushed and, and it was, you know, uh, yeah. But they're still willing to work with us and try and get something going, so, yeah.
Okay, that's gonna be my thing. Okay. Planning committee for hazard mitigation?
Tom wants, I must, we have a planning committee.
Sharon and I went to the hazard mitigation meeting.
Yes, from a couple of months ago, yeah, so you, you two went?
Yeah, we did. We did go. Yeah, and they, they just want someone to reach out to, is what it boils down to. There was a mixture of public, of city employees and, and council members and mayors and, um, whatever at the meeting, depending on which entity was represented, so, um, you know, I guess, it'd be nice if there was more than just the city employees involved in the planning committee. It'd be nice if at least one council member could be represented, um, according to what we learned that night as far as how we deal with hazard mitigation, so. It was very, it, it was brief but informative, I guess, um, and I understand the whole process behind it.
How long before you need an answer?
Well, do you want meetings in January?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted meetings in January, cause he wants to meet with the committee.
Yeah, but I think it's late enough in January, we could probably decide with the new council on that January meeting, cause the January meeting's fairly early. Yeah, um, we could probably decide that, but with all of you represented, I guess, be thinking if that's something you would, um, volunteer for, or, have an arm wrestling match or something.
Could we get the materials referenced? And it says there's a link, it says click here. Do you have that website?
You can Google it too. If you go look at it, you're gonna see the previous years probably though. I don't know if the new stuff will be posted yet. It might be. And it'll show you every town in Lynn County and who, who the attendees were before. And far and above, like you said, in small towns, it's usually the city clerk or a council member, or maybe a city employee in smaller towns, but usually, a council member's usually there.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we saw from the, the people that we knew, you know, cause we recognized clerks in other public works, and they usually had someone until there was a, a council member or a, uh, a mayor, whatever.
So, but you can pull the full plan if you wanna see it. It's all out on the web.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, moving on, discuss, take action on sidewalk payment on, uh, sliced Moonheart Street, lot seven to eleven. If you have that in your packets.
I think that, tell me if I'm wrong, but we had a conversation during planning of the Moonheart Project at one of the council meetings, where we were talking about sidewalk and the fact that some people had sidewalk, some people didn't. Um, and after doing the project on Roosevelt, you know, where we instituted getting sidewalk put in, that, uh, you know, everyone who didn't have sidewalk was gonna have to pay for it. And I know that I mentioned, why would we bill another taxpaying entity for putting a sidewalk in to pay back another taxpaying entity? Um, there was no objection to that at that meeting. We did not take them, make a motion on it, but there was no objection, and so I did report to Cory, the head custodian, and, and to Danny that, um, you know, yes, there is gonna be sidewalk put in, and no, it won't be to your expense. The failure there is that no objection was made at that point, that hey, we need to look into this further. Sharon has pointed out and is, has very thoroughly researched that, you know, it sets a bad precedent. You know, if we don't make them pay, um, we can't ask anyone else to pay for their sidewalk, um, which I totally understand. But it has, in the process of action not being taken at that point, and it being taken care of immediately, now the school's in a bad position. Cause they are just like us. They have to budget and they have to spend their funds according to, you know. So, that's how we have arrived at this situation. If there was a reason, um, you know, I mean, when that discussion took place at that council meeting, um, that's, in my opinion, where the failure was. We should've either agreed to look into it further or taken action at that point that, you know.
And, and I will agree, I researched this thoroughly. And as we learned at our meeting the other night, you can discuss something for hours. If no motion is made, nothing takes place. It does not happen. And we are two different taxing, but we're two different taxing entities. The school taxes the district for school expenses, the city taxes the city for city expenses. And as our attorney has said, that if we pay for that, then the taxpayers of the city are subsidizing the district taxpayers, which is not proper.
I don't have an argument with that. There is no argument with that. We all know that that is true. Uh, at all, and absolutely, and the superintendent also knows that that is, is true. It's a, it was a communication problem. And even though we're not supposed to, there's lots of things gets communicated without a motion over the course of, it happens all the time, but it didn't this ti- you know, this is becoming an issue, so.
There's quite a few balls left for me.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I mean, the easement has dropped, and as it's signed, there's only one who wasn't signed.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it should've went right back.
Yeah.
You know, and got it.
The, basically, we just need to, there's no reason to hash over the, the problem anymore, cause we know it's a problem and it needs to be taken care of, but I think we need to find, my opinion is, um, we need to find a way to, to make it easier for the, the school to deal with this, uh, whether it's to give them time to, to deal with it or to, um, you know, as was stated in the letter, you know, can, maybe they should have the opportunity to see if they could've done it themselves cheaper. They didn't get that opportunity. But if they could come up with a bid now, after the fact, that says they could do it, they could've done it themselves cheaper, maybe that's something we need to deal with. I doubt they can. I mean, that number that we had for that project was pretty competitive, but.
I guess I feel that they had the option to pay it over five years like anybody else.
That's what I was.
So they can, they can break it down to a thousand some dollars a year, which, you know, they could do that.
Well, and I don't even think that's an issue, as far as, I mean, it's, it's a matter of getting it into their system. It might just be a matter of waiting till next fiscal year, getting it on the, I don't know. That, that's their issue, I mean.
I don't think it's, we're not worried about, I mean, they're gonna pay the money, they have to pay the money eventually. I mean, you gotta play with their, what they have, with their budget and everything, you know, and I, we understand that, you know, Danny can't approve anything over five hundred, five thousand dollars.
Five thousand, yeah.
So it's over five thousand, so she'll, you know, you gotta jump through your hoops to get it done, so.
One thing that I would ask is, in- One thing that I would ask is, in, again, I can take some of the weight of this on my shoulders by reporting to Cory that, you know, after it was mentioned there was no objection, I probably should have been more thorough, so I'll take, I'll take that on my shoulders, but I don't want to be the go-between on this, um, for obvious reasons, so.
You shouldn't be.
No, I, I just want to, and...
You could stay.
That's, well, that's part of the reason that I reported that information at the time to Cory, is I don't like, lots of people ask, you know, will you tell your wife this, or will you ask your wife this? And she gets the same for me, too, and it, it, it's hard, it's difficult. So I just would ask that someone else deal with this, you know, report what has been said here and, and go forward with it, and I don't want to have anything to do with it.
I think, I think just...
Because I think the thing to do is, who did you say, what did you say the gentleman's name was?
Cory Arment.
Cory, why don't we have Sharon send him the letter?
Not Cory, she'd go directly to him. Yeah, we're not, there again, we should not deal with the...
However we want it, whatever's best.
Yeah, yeah, otherwise we'd be playing the same game.
Well, the, the letter asks that we make a special resolution to pay this, and she is also asking very nicely to have notification prior to the fifteenth, so she has time to add it to her December eighteenth school board agenda. It's a difficult matter, um, and ultimately, if it's dealt with tonight, uh, which I think it should be, the three council members here, the only ones present, are gonna have to make the decision whether, if it goes to a special resolution. I'm inclined not to vote for it, because I don't think we can, and clearly, the miscommunications that took place are still not the fault of the cities ultimately to pay for this. But I am loathe to get into, uh, bad feelings with the school system, and, uh, I don't want it to result in that. So it's a, it's a, it's a difficult matter. But based on what it says here, it sounds like Dr. Trimble is asking for action this evening so she can report to her school board, is that what, that's how I read the letter? I'm not sure if we have the, well, we can do anything we want, but the letter implies that we don't have the option to pay the list in further.
And this is to be added to the December eighteenth of October, January, I mean, we're not looking for a payment like right now, tomorrow anyways, so.
I'm trying to leave you out of it, do you know if she needs action right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, if, the thing, the thing is, she, she can, I think it's in the budget, she could pay this, you know, and she could do it as early as the December eighteenth meeting. And yes, she is looking for resolution, because why wouldn't she? Of course she's hoping we can make an exception of some kind, but if it can't be made, then she'd just like to know about it and get it over, because then...
I don't think my opinion will change in January, of course I won't be a voting member in January, so it won't matter, but...
Right.
As it is now, I wo- I wouldn't support this.
Well, I understand that.
You don't have a court, even if I say no, you don't have a court, you don't have a, there's only three of us here.
We'd have to, all three of you would have to agree.
Yeah.
So my no is enough to kill it right now.
The, all I'm saying is, the only other option that I see, given that letter and what has happened, would be to say, there will be no resolution, but we will extend payment over, over time like we would to any other citizen, if, you know, either payment in full when you can, or, um, same terms as any other citizen that we have given, that's...
You got five years.
And then, and that way she has the option, when she goes to her board on the eighteenth, she can prepare a proposal and, and go to them and say, you know, we can split this up over a couple fiscal years if you would like, or whatever, and, you know. She's just gonna have to explain that there was a miscommunication, uh, just like I, we have explained it here at this council.
Well, she could certainly have our apology in writing if she wants it, where, how it was mishandled, because she had put her in a very difficult position.
And I don't think that's what she's after, she's just trying to, uh, you know, always trying to do things as correct as possible, and, and when things don't get handled correctly, that, that is bothersome to her, so.
Well, as we learn from our mistakes.
And it's gonna happen, no matter how hard we try, right?
I would just have Sharon sign the letter, and I would hand it to her.
That's gonna occur, you do it tomorrow, so she knows.
You know, and give her the option to go over five years, you know.
Just like anybody else, just like me.
Yeah, we're, you know, we take the responsibility, we didn't do everything right, you know, so. Okay?
They'll withdraw motion, whatever, whatever it is, whatever.
All right. Well, moving on now to certificate of oaths.
We got certificate of service, but you get Dave and Steve, and neither one of them is here.
Certificate of service, yeah, they're right here, so, you can come back.
Yeah, but, and since he's not here, he's not coming back, I would present this to you, Dave. Dave has been our mayor and councilman for fourteen years. We had some difficult times, we've made it through it, and I think we've come a long, long ways and really progressed as the city does. Congratulations, thank you.
So, we're gonna take oath of offices at this time. So Bethany, would you come forward? I, Bethany?
Hi, Bethany.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And then I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties?
Discharge all duties.
Of the office of city council member?
Of the office of city council member.
In Alvernet.
In Alvernet, Iowa.
And then, as now and thereafter required by law.
As now and thereafter required by law.
Any sentence? There's another one there for you, missing one for Sharon. Okay, Joe?
That's not my name?
Hi, Joe Trump.
Hi, Joe Trump.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties?
Discharge all duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member.
In Alvernet, Iowa?
In Alvernet, Iowa.
As now and therefore required by law.
As now and therefore required by law.
Yeah, Charlie?
Hi, Charlie McLean Talk.
Hi, Charlie McLean Talk.
Do solemnly, do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa?
The State of Iowa.
And then I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully.
And impartially?
And impartially.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties?
Discharge all duties.
Of the mi- office of mayor?
Of the office of mayor.
In Alvernet, Iowa?
In Alvernet, Iowa.
As now and thereafter required by law.
As now and thereafter is required by law.
And I ask for five minutes here for a closing statement, and we're gonna take that one, so. My family and I joined the Alvernet community over seventeen years ago, and I have had the privilege of serving Alvernet on the council from January two thousand four to March of two thousand eight, and as a mayor from two, March two thousand eight to December, uh, two thousand seventeen. I want to thank all the people that I've served with throughout the years, as well as the community members who has supported not only me, but the work of the city council. We have made great strides financially, and as well as in upgrading the infrastructure. It is not always easy to make the hard decisions, and I know Charlie McLean Talk will do a fantastic job as mayor. His knowledge of city works as well as a passion for the betterment of Alvernet. I'd like to thank the existing council members, exiting council members, Dave Wood and Steve Guttenkoch for their services. Our current city council members, Chester Shance, Ryan Menson, will continue with the addition of the newly elected members, Joe Trump and Bethany Singer. Sharon Robertson, Robertson, the city clerk, and Guy Trimble, Public Works, are also part of the current Alvernet staff serving the community. I know they will all work together to support Charlie as our new mayor. I am open, I am open to serving Alvernet in the open council seat. It has been my honor to serve Alvernet these past fourteen years. With that, I'd like to have that printed in the paper, please. So with that, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.